Okay, now we're going to reconvene the Urbana City Council meeting. And would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
She was here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
President.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we would accept the minutes of the previous council meeting.
I second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for petitions and communications. Is there anyone in the audience? I have two people that have filled out forms to talk. Burnell Dixon, would you state your name and your address, please?
Thank you. My name is Burnell Dixon. I live at 507 Crystal Lake Drive. I have lived there off and on for the last eight years. I've been a resident of this county for the last 15. I'd like to read something into the council minutes, if I may, and I have a couple issues to address to this honorable counsel, if I may. Okay? This is a letter dated to the Honorable Mayor Pressing and City Council of the Persons. And this is regarding an incident at August 10th, 2005, at Cunningham Township. And I'm gonna read as follows. Dear Sirs and Madams, On Friday, August 5th, I called the Township Office of Cunningham at 11:00 a.m. to inquire about eligibility for Township assistance and for a client from Lakeside Terrace and the status of the Champagne-Urbana Area Project Social Services Grant from the City of Urbana and the Township of Cunningham. Previously, in approximately June of July, oh, June, excuse me, June and July of 2005, I had talked to Carol Elliott, Township Supervisor, a couple times regarding the application process and the approximate date of payment to CUAP for a social services grant. She explained the process to me, indicating that Township would send paperwork to be completed by the CUAP Board of Directors and that we receive payment by the first week of August upon prompt return of our required paperwork that she had previously set. Thus, I initiated a call to Township Office around 11:00 a.m. on Friday, August 5th, 2005, to check on the status of payment and to check the eligibility requirements for Township applicants, seeing as I'm working with residents of Lakeside to help them receive the assistance they need. My call was answered by an answering machine, which directed me to leave my name and number, which I did, and someone would, and the answering machine said someone called me back. No one called me back on Friday, August 5th, 2005, Monday, August 8th, 2005, Tuesday, August 9th, 2005, and that might be an error in what I submitted. It should be 2005. And Wednesday morning. On Wednesday morning, August 10th, 2005, there about 10:30 a.m., I had an opportunity to drop by the Cunningham Township Office on Green Street in Urbana, Illinois. I was greeted at the front desk by a young, white female in shorts with a facial ring on her face. And I don't know if it's a nose ring or lip ring. I can't remember, okay? But it was something that struck my memory, okay? Which took me slightly aback, as this office is supposed to be a representative of the city. And I don't think shorts are appropriate for a professional office. Definitely not, and that's definitely not considered business attire. She asked me what I wanted, and I replied that I had called the office on Friday, about three or four days before, and I'm inquired about services, and that it's now Wednesday. I hadn't received a return phone call. And I am here to check on the status and the eligibility of a couple applicants on a couple things. She immediately replied that I hadn't called there. I politely responded, "Yes, I had." And she said, "No, you hadn't." She didn't say that answering machine was broken. She didn't say that she failed to get the message. She called me a liar, in other words, and said I hadn't called. Now, I then insisted, "May I please speak to the supervisor?" Ms. Carol Elliott came out of her office and asked me to step in her office. As I stepped in, she asked me why was our... She told me I was rude to her receptionist. I said, "No, ma'am." I begged her pardon, "No, I wasn't." I asked a simple question. I disagreed. I was not rude. I am not impolite. She then asked what my problem was, and I responded, "Well, your office isn't too user-friendly." And I had called Friday. Today is Wednesday. Why hadn't I received a call back? She jumped up, and I'm adding this to my letter, and stated that she was there Friday till 5:00 p.m. And I asked, "Well, why do you have an answering machine on during record business hours? And why is your office user-friendly?" At that point, Ms. Elliott raised her voice at me again and asked why I was there. I again identified myself as project manager for CUAP Champagne-Urbana Area Project, and I was checking on the status of our social service grant and was all of our paperwork complete. Ms. Elliott replied that she had sent information last week and that she mailed it to the executive director of CUAP. I replied that that could not be, because the executive director was on vacation. I'm program manager. I check the mail every day. We hadn't got a bit of correspondence. At that point, Ms. Elliott continued to raise her voice to me. And I told her that I would not tolerate rude conduct from a public official for asking simple questions. And I told her also that I'd report that to my city council and my mayor. As I was, and I told, and I tried to leave the office. I left the office. As I was walking out of the office, ignoring her vituperative comments, she stated she would call my supervisor and report me. And I stated, "I just could go to city council, report this to my mayor and my city council." I stopped at the office of Mayor that morning at about 10:30 a.m. The mayor was on vacation. I made an appointment to see the mayor that time, about 10 minutes later, on August 25th, 2005, at 10:30 a.m. I then stopped at the office of Ms. Vassilia Clark, the Human Relations Officer, to inquire and tell her about the story and what possible remedies I may have within city Township government. And she indicated I need to report to you guys. In summary, I have the following questions for you, my city council, my elected representatives. And those questions are, "Why does Township have people in the front desk with shorts and facial rings on?" That might be inappropriate, but I think the office should be professional. I also ask, "Why does Township have an answering machine on during the day when people can't call and get a response?" Now, this is not the first time I've called the office and got an answering machine. I am sorry. I didn't feel the need to report that to my council previously, but now I do. Another question I have is, "Why is Township not user-friendly?" And I have heard this story from several Urbana residents who have indicated Township is rude and impertinent. And that's the same thing that I have as a professional man, trying to inquire about services and things for the clientele I represent. And the last question I pose this honorable counsel is, "Why is the Township Supervisor so defensive about a citizen, about a citizen, excuse me, questioning the administration of her office?" Now, wait a minute. The last I saw of a voter, of a citizen? Okay, and if something's wrong, I gotta pose it to the supervisor. For her to be mean-spirited, I thought was inappropriate. I don't know what else I could do but walk right to the mayor's office and make an appointment to complain to the mayor, walk right to the Human Relations Office and try and inquire what my rights are. And so, I ask you, honorable members of city council, honorable mayor, to please inquire about this, because I'm very distraught over this inappropriate treat. And I ask your indulgence to please inquire about it. I have further information that I could give to the council that's not in this inquiry letter I've submitted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We do have sort of a five-minute limit, so if you want to wrap it up...
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple more issues other than this to address the council with, okay? If I may.
Well, I think you've been talking for about 10 minutes now, so...
Okay. May I just briefly?
Sure.
Honorable mayor. I submitted a letter to Edward Bland on August 4th, 2004. And to make it succinct, I asked about services for people who are relocated from Lakeside. I will submit this to the clerk to give to you, whether it go over my time, okay? And the last thing I want to address is, there has been rumor and innuendo about a Champagne police officer being charged with a crime, and it's not been forthcoming. I ask this honorable counsel to investigate that and let there be public record and let us know what's going on. And I thank you very much for your time and your diligence.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Dixon. Did you ever get the correspondence from the Township Office concerning the grant?
No, sir.
It's never showed up.
The next day, after I complained. And what I understand, Honorable Mr. Smith, is they filed a complaint against me.
So, the correspondence that Ms. Elliott said she sent has never made it to...
Didn't make it when I asked about it, but it made it the next day.
It was there the next day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dixon? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, honorable counsel members and honorable mayor.
Okay. Next person is Carol Ammons. Would you please state your name and your address?
My name is Carol Ammons. Address 1108 North Bucy Avenue. Good evening to all of you. I do have to make a very quick correction on what was just said previously, that I think there was just a misstatement. The allegation was not of a Champagne police officer, but an Urbana police officer. And I wanted to make that sure that correction was heard. I know someone in Champagne's saying, "What? What are we talking about?" So, that stands corrected. I have received numerous phone calls, unfortunately, or fortunately for me, unfortunately for you all. I am not on the city council at this point. But I do receive lots of phone calls from citizens on lots of complaints, lots of issues of social injustice. And I do express to them that I am not in a position to necessarily do anything about their complaint and try to direct them to the right sources. In this same matter of the allegations against Urbana police officer, I have received calls. I received calls all over the weekend, as well as all of today. And I did send correspondence to our state's attorney's office to inquire and to forward these complaints to her office. She did give me a response. And her response was basically telling me that basically it's out of her court, but I needed to come and speak to Urbana if I wanted to find out anything further. And so, that's what sent me here. And I know that's like, "Okay, why are you coming to see us about this?" But this is what I was told that I needed to do. I have a very few comments that I'll make, because in light of so much that is happening in our community, this is yet another area of concern that really makes the citizens wonder what type of government we are trying to promote. If there are allegations surrounding criminal conduct, whether civilian or officer, the allegations need to be followed through the due process system. Unfortunately, at present, this has been a little over maybe a couple weeks that this allegation has been put out. And there has not been any information, not from the media, not from the citizens, from the Urbana City Council, from the mayor, from anyone, about the allegations. As a female, I am very concerned about my safety when, and African-American, make sure that I put that out there, because it is important that people understand the severity of sexism, racism, and any other ism that may exist in our capacity as officials. And as a person of color and a female, I am always concerned when I'm pulled over by police. I get a little tinge of intimidation and fear that comes upon me naturally from being born in America. But one of the things that I'm concerned about specifically in Urbana is whether this really happened. One of the things we don't want to happen is rumors, 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 rumors. I've received numerous calls with all kinds of stories, and none of them have been factualized. It is important that we continue to look at how we are policing our community. One of the things that we've seen from the I-DOT report is the implication of racial profiling, which is a real issue, not just in Urbana, but across this country. And for us to pretend that it is not a real issue is a slap in the face of the citizens of this country. I don't believe that an agency that describes itself as community-oriented can make that claim, though, unless there is a full and authentic partnership between the community and the policing community. Policy-making and program development, crisis management, really, everything that goes into policing a community needs to be forthright, open, and honest. And if at any point in our community, whether it's in the courthouse, in the judiciary body, in the policing body, in the mayorship, or in any other official capacity, that there is a slight perception of a cover-up in this city, we need to make sure that the citizens know that we will not tolerate that in the city of Urbana. I urge all of you, if you have not received any information with regard to this allegation, that you begin to look into it and find the facts and do not withhold the facts from the community, because the community deserves to know whether there is a predator on the police department who is going unpunished. I have a very difficult job sitting in this seat because I understand the difficulties for policing in any community. I myself have always thought about being a police officer and almost actually did it just recently. But if we have a loss of confidence and eventually outright hostility in the black community, that is going to be a major concern for all citizens. So, I would urge you all to not just let this thing kind of go by and run amok and somebody maybe is allegations floating all around and rumors. Let's deal with this head-on, and let's not allow one officer to taint the entire police department of Urbana. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question? Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, we do have one other person. Would you please state your name and address?
Hi, my name's Cameron Belk, Sr., and 1403 East Washington. I'm employed by the Urbana School District. I'm a assistant in a classroom there for Cross-Cat children and also have a store here in Urbana, Mari's Fashions. I was just a little concerned about the situation on Learman, where they want to rule out the parking there. There's limited parking in that area. And for us to be a diverse community, I think we have to look at the whole picture. I'm not Hispanic, but I know a lot of Hispanics go to that area to play soccer. I think we need to make sure that we look at, when we say we can't park there, where do these Hispanics play soccer now? Because there's no parking anywhere close. I mean, you can park your car on the other side of the Brookins Building, maybe. But I'd just like to make sure that, you know, when we make those kind of decisions, that we look at it holistically. And also with the police department, I've got to say, and I know this is a little bit different than a lot of people in the city. There's some good officers on Urbana Police Force. I've worked with some in the school district. There's some that's really great, you know? Corey Colker, good guy, you know? Tim McNod, I know him pretty well. And you know, but one of the issues that we're looking at is, are there a few bad apples? In most places, there are. I have family members that are police officers that I don't desire them to be police officers in St. Louis, in East St. Louis, Illinois. But one of the things we have to look at, though, in our community, do we want a diverse community? And do we want our young people to respect the police officers? I see children every day, young African-American children, when they see a police officer come by, you know, "Man, that police officer, that's the one that got my dad," you know? Not realizing, because their programs and those kind of educational programs have gone astray. You know, tell a kid, you know, "You can't sell drugs." But if they see people selling drugs all day long, every day, it's okay, because nobody stops them. But if somebody stops them, one day decides to stop them, then that child thinks, "Well, they just arrested my dad." So, what I'd like to see us do is become more community-oriented, where we act as a family and we all work together to teach children that police are all right and have police officers come into the community for things other than to make arrests. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Belk?
Mr. Belk, real quickly, just so you know that there are additional soccer fields behind Brookins, and there's a big parking lot there. As a former park district coach, we were actually told to, many years ago, to get people parking back there and not on the street, because there really has been no parking there for a long time. And it really has been informally, it hasn't been enforced. So, it really has been no parking for many, many years. But because of the convenience of pulling up and playing, which isn't going to be possible anymore under the new configuration. But there's plenty of parking in the back. And in fact, there are three more soccer fields in the back, which can be used. So, as to community policing, are you aware that we're adding, we've made a commitment to increase our police force? Are you aware that we're adding three police officers this year?
Yes. What I mean is community involvement, like the lady before me had mentioned. I mean, the actual community, working with the police officers, working with the city itself. I mean, more police officers, that's, I mean, that's fine. You need that as you add onto your city and, you know, your annex on. But what I'm saying is, you have to develop a relationship between, you know, the community and the officers.
Yeah, well, what I was hoping was that as we add more police officers, we'll have more time for community involvement. That's been one of the issues, because I know that, you know, the police officer at the school district gets pulled whenever something is needed. You know, they get pulled off of a beat at another time when we're shorthanded, and so on. So, hopefully, the city will be able to address that issue. And there'll be some additional opportunities coming forward. Stay tuned, and if you're interested in getting involved, please leave your name with the mayor.
Okay.
And the city, the police department is having a public meeting here on October 20, August 25th. So, they are reaching out to the community. Does someone else have a question?
I was just gonna say the same thing. That it was, they're gonna establish a regular time when a community can interact with the police officers here. And I don't care if it's monthly or bimonthly.
Bimonthly.
First Thursdays, they call it. It's a new program, and it's got a lot of potential for interacting in new ways, just like you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do have some good news. Bill Gray, our Director of Public Works, is the 2005 sole recipient of the Professional Engineering Management Award, which I think has just been handed to me. And it's award from the Illinois Society of Professional Engineers. And for his accomplishment, he's being recognized today. So, this is your award, Bill?
The entire state of Illinois.
Yeah, good stuff.
Okay, is there another communication?
Yes, this is from a council member. I'd like to request a closed-session briefing of the sexual assault allegation of a police officer so that council members can be briefed about the status of that, view the information that's available to the chief of police, and to also be briefed on how to protect the integrity of the investigation.
When do you want that to be?
Would be great, next Monday. We could put it on the agenda as a closed session.
Okay. Are there any other communications? Any old business? Okay, reports of standing committees. That would be the committee of the whole. Heather Stevenson.
We'll go with 1A, ordinance from Traffic Commission, ordinance number 2005-08-119, and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Main Street. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Smythe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, roll call.
Oh, this is a roll call?
Yes.
Oh, I also forgot to ask if there's any discussion.
Yes, you should do that.
Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2005-08-120, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Rutherford Drive. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
1A3, ordinance number 2005-08-121, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Learman Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
The motion is made by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? All those, no, this is another roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers-Sachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
1B, resolution number 2005-08-012R, resolution approving and authorizing the adoption of the House Rehabilitation Program, manual program years 2005 through 2009. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Okay, are you here for some discussion or presentation?
Oh, that's right, because we...
We spoke about this last week at Committee of the Whole, and my understanding was that council was requesting a little further clarification, which I've provided for you tonight. On your desks, when you arrived this evening, you should have found a memo, paperclip to it, are some replacement pages for the manual that you received in the packet last week. As I mentioned, there were several issues that were brought up during the discussion that required some minor revision. I also mentioned last week that HUD had a couple of recommendations that were going to necessitate minor revisions. All of these are included in the pages here, which, as I said, they've been punched so that you can replace the ones in your comband books. If you have trouble with that, put your name on your book and give it to me, and we'll run it through our little combinding machine downstairs, and I'll give it to you, give it back. Okay, so, I'll go through these revisions individually, if you'd like. But the one that I would most like to address is the one that generated the most discussion last week, and that was with respect to the whole house rehab program and council's desire to see that it was preferentially awarded to the households below 50 percent median family income. As I mentioned briefly last week, this is a program that Randy Burgett runs and is much more familiar with. And so, I apologize for my inability to answer you completely last week. However, I believe we've made a good change to this, to the manual, based on your request. We've added, or your inquiry, I should say. We've added Appendix 2, which is the prioritization list scoring form. And that would be the very last page in the punched packet that you have. This is the prioritization list that all applications are, it's, all applications are scored based on this worksheet. And if you take a look at it, you'll see that in Part 1, the very first... the very first household factor that's considered is the median family income. As you can see, the, the points are very heavily slanted towards the lower income households. However, this scoring sheet also takes into consideration other aspects of the household demographics as far as makeup, children in the household, elderly. And then a second category that's taken into consideration is the condition of the unit itself. This basically addresses the urgency of the need for, for repairs or rehabilitation. This can sometimes be very important if you have someone that calls because there's sparks coming out of their fuse box, for instance. Actually, that would probably end up being an emergency repair, not a whole house rehab. But in any case, both of these factors are, are considered and totaled and that is, is a big part of the prioritization list. So if you had any other questions about this discussion item?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Is the unit factor scoring, the whole concept of scoring is new, correct?
No, no, this is actually, this has been implemented previously.
Okay, so this, was it, was it in here?
It was not included in the manual, no.
So, so these, this unit factor existed, the unit factor scoring existed before and what's new is the income section?
No, this, this is, there, there's nothing new about this other than the fact that we're including it in the rehab manual. This has always been part of the paperwork that has been completed by grants management staff when they assess all of the applications. And again, I, I apologize, having not been an intake person for the rehab program, then I wasn't fully prepared to answer all of your questions last week.
Okay, so, so, so actually, last week you said that you thought people got whole house rehab based on first come, first served and that wasn't correct?
And that was incorrect.
Okay, so this, you're actually including a scoring form that we've been using for a while that, that actually weights who gets access to funds for whole house rehab.
Correct.
Based on these criteria.
Correct.
Excellent.
Good.
Okay. Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, and sort of a follow-up. So though we target these whole house and other issues to, to certain census tracts, right? But at the same time, you don't necessarily have to be part of the census tract. You can still submit an application and be scored, right?
No, for whole house rehab, you must be within the target area. Then the applications that are, all the, there's an application period that, that's open. There's an open invitation for requests. Once that period has been closed, then all of the applications are assessed based on the scoring criteria. And then the, the applications proceed. A lot of them don't end up moving forward because either the households are above income, the income guidelines or unable to provide other criteria that are necessary for completing the application package.
Are we using up all of the money every year that is available for this program?
No, we have, for the whole house rehab, we have a small carryover where we almost spend it all. For the other project, for the other programs, the ones that do actually address on a first come, first served basis, which would be emergency grants, senior repair and access grants, we have never been in danger of running out of money for those, so.
You know, in danger of running out is, is maybe a good thing, maybe a bad thing. But, you know, you know, are we getting enough money into each of these is where I'm going? And, and are we addressing all of the needs that are in the community? So, I mean, if we allocate, you know, X number of dollars and we're, we have 50% of it left at the end of the year, then that might not be the best allocation of the money if there are additional needs out there. If there are people that are not qualifying, but there is a need, I'd like to know about it, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's where my question's going. So I mean, are there, so in, in your estimation, are there needs out there that are not being addressed by the programs that we have?
There, there are certainly needs out there. There are people who would like to have their houses rehabilitated, that need to have their houses rehabilitated, that simply cannot fulfill the criteria of these programs. And some of those criteria involve the income threshold at 80%, which is imposed upon us by HUD. Others have to do with how much, whether they own the house. They're, they need to own the house. They, they need to have enough equity in the home that the cost does not exceed the after rehab value by, it cannot exceed 100%. So there are, there are situations where the debt load of low income households is so high that, that they cannot participate in these programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Barnes?
I recommend approval of Resolution 2005-08-012R with a clarification provided by Erin.
Second. All right, this is just, is there another question?
Yeah, I have one more question. I just want to make sure I understand all of our revisions since last week and thank you for all the work responding to our many requests. The Appendix Two prioritization list applies to which programs?
This applies only to the, the whole house rehab, which would be the grant deferred loans and the grant installment loans. We talked a little bit last week about the grant deferred loans being the 0 to 50% MFI and then above 50%, up to 80% MFI would be the grant installment loans where the house owner would be paying part of it back on a monthly basis.
So the new program, the secondary structure demolition program, we had done some clarification to make sure that the target area was the primary area that we were serving and that requests for using that program outside the target area would be considered case by case. Was there any other discussion of how we do that and how we prioritize the target area over the whole city so that we're mostly serving the target area?
We didn't establish a ranking system based on that. Since this is a project, as we discussed last week, under the term shut away, that has been done in the past, there's, we'll have a certain bit of experience as far as implementing it. However, since, on the other hand, since it hasn't been offered for a while, we're, we're kind of still feeling our way to see exactly how big of a response we're getting. My inclination would be for us to accept applications throughout the city and proceed into the program year, see how many of them are coming from the target area before we decide that there are applications outside the target area that we want to allocate funds towards. Except perhaps in the case of, of a serious life safety issue. If we have something that's in danger of, you know, like falling on little children and, you know, that kind of thing, then obviously that would be something that we would give more immediate consideration to, regardless of its location outside the target area.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Also with regard to the secondary structure program, if you'll notice, we discussed capping that program at 50% MFI. We did implement that change. The senior repair service modifications that are listed here in the table, those were as per a HUD request for clarification. And I believe that that's, that's basically all. There were just a few.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, last week we talked about the grant installment loan and you made a compelling argument for why we should include people up to 80% MFI, particularly because it's a 50% bank loan, 50% grant. My question, or, and these changes are overwhelmingly positive, I have positive response to them. The question is, do we prioritize applications that come in for the grant installment loan based on income or other kinds of needs? That's the one piece I feel is still missing. It's, unless I'm not seeing something.
No, actually, I apologize for not being clear. That this prioritization list that we talked about applies to both the grant installment and the grant deferred. So if you'll notice that, simply because they're eligible for the grant installment, they will receive zero points on the, the income scoring factor. However, if, if their house is in just abysmal condition and they score very high on the, on the unit factors or, you know, some of these other factors that come into consideration if there are a high number of, of young children in the household, then they may end up.
I, I understand. I, I'm actually reading the chart wrong. It's, it's, for some reason, I thought the whole house rehab was the last thing on the list, which is the purchase rehab resale. That's the one where we actually do a mortgage from a financial institution. There's not really a grant component to it. It's the whole house rehab, which we're calling grant installment loan over here on the left, which, which does have the preferential treatment. Okay, that takes care of it. It's just, it was, it was a mistake in terms of the reading of this chart, so thanks for clarification.
And I have two typos to point out. Page 46, 9.3, sentence number one. Target is missing a T. And on page 63, the very last page, the third item is missing a T in front of the plumbing system.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, one more question, Erin. On the unit factors scoring, it looks like there's a total of 144 points you could get if your house obviously had all of these deficiencies. Do you know, is it usually the case when we're scoring this that just a few things are found that are wrong or that the bulk of the points and the bulk of the scoring is really based on the unit more so than on the family and on their income?
In, in my experience, we've really seen the full range. If, in many cases, if a unit is, is getting close to that 140, then chances are it can't be addressed by the, the $25,000 rehab limit, which would be another factor in answer to your earlier question, Mr. Smythe, about households, units that are out there that cannot be addressed by these programs. If, if the repairs necessary exceed $25,000 and the household cannot secure loan funds for the difference, then this is, this would not be a unit that can be addressed. And that does occasionally happen. Frankly, that's one of the reasons why we were really eager to start this pilot program with the purchase rehab resale. Because when we do find that there are those units, and, and very often they tend to be units that, that an elderly individual or a couple is living in and maybe has for a long time and they have, they have equity in the home and they're in a position in their, or in the time of their life where they can move to a smaller unit. But it's, you know, they may not think that they can sell the house because it needs so many repairs. Ideally, down the road, we would like to be able to provide an opportunity for us to, to purchase the kinds of homes that we can't rehab with $25,000. Repay those people the equity that they've put into their homes year after year after year so that they can then move on to, you know, perhaps an affordable condo situation where, you know, exterior maintenance, lawn care is all taken care of for them because that's, that's where they are as far as being homeowners at that point. That way, they're not losing equity that they've, that they've worked so hard to achieve. The home is brought back up to standard and can then be resold to another income eligible household that can start fresh and raise their kids there. And so, so that, that's, that's our, our dream, our hope with both of these programs.
Thanks.
Any other questions? This is a simple voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Stevenson?
Ordinance number 2005-08-122. An ordinance approving an amendment to an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Agreement. Homestead Affordable Homership, Home Ownership Program, FY 2003 through 2004. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Ordinance number 2005-08-123. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of certain real estate. 1209 West Beach. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Bowersachs. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call and the mayor gets to vote. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Are there any reports of officers?
No.
Mr.?
Oh, sorry.
Award-winning Public Works Director, Bill Gray.
I wanted to give an update on a July 9th, Saturday. A tire collection, EPA sponsored in the community, champagne, Urbana, Savoy. We helped promote this through Mr. Fletcher's office. Anyway, there was 123 participants that dropped off 7,310 tires, or 91 tons of tires. And the EPA told us that this easily doubled their typical amount of, number of tires or tonnage of tires that they receive, which to us clearly indicates a need for more often tire collection by the EPA. But I just wanted to let you know that this was highly successful back on July 9th and we just got these final numbers in this week, so.
Tell me that number again.
There was 91 tons of tires that were collected on this one day, Saturday. 123 participants or entities dropped off these tires. And we're talking car, truck, tractor type tires. And there was a total of 7,312 tires, so large number.
And this is private owners, not businesses?
Correct. Yeah, it's not a commercial situation.
Right, that's incredible.
Bill, before you run up, where, where was this publicized? I never saw it.
I think there was, news was advertisement and some other means, but I can't speak to all the, the methods. But I'm just reporting the results, so somebody heard, I guess.
Somebody heard it, obviously. I just didn't read closely enough.
Lots of people.
Any other reports of officers? Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, new business. Resolution number 2005-08-013R. Resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes from February 2005 to August 2005.
I move that the minutes that were from closed session from February 2005 to August 2005 be released.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I second that.
A motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion?
Actually, I think we, I wouldn't quite support the motion as worded that way. We don't want to release all the minutes of all the closed sessions between February of '05 and August of '05, just the selected minutes that are listed in the resolution and the ordinance, sorry, the resolution given to us this evening.
The resolution is correct, however, right?
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? This is a simple voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance number 2005-08-128. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for the installation of certain utilities along Matthews Avenue.
The license agreement that was in your packet is a fairly standard, typical agreement going back to the 80s. This is probably the 17th such license agreement we've done with the university. And we're close to coming up and presenting a general license agreement, which is in the process of being finalized. But before you this evening is, on Matthews Avenue at the far south end, from Nevada Street South, there will be a utility trench necessary for a telecommunications duct to feed the post genomics institute building. And what is our practice is, prior to the work occurring, there needs to be a certain understanding of what can and can't be done and what timeframes, et cetera. And that's what this license is all about. So this would be.
this duct, this project, as we maintain the street?
Good question. Basically, if it would be in our way, if the duct was in the way of a sewer or something, which is typically a conflict point, we would try to make all means to avoid it, obviously, number one. But if we couldn't, the agreement technically says, the university, sorry, you have to move this duct and get out of the way of our sewer or whatever. But these are fairly remote situations because those types of infrastructures are already in place. Storm and sanitary sewers are already in place. If it was the flip-flop where this was first and those were coming later, there'd be more potential for conflict.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, and so I understand that we have a more universal agreement coming that will supersede this based on the agreements that have been worked out with the university.
Correct.
Okay, but it'll be pretty much like this then, though, right?
Very similar.
Yeah, okay. It's a lot to read through.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Next is ordinance number two thousand and five dash oh eight dash one two six, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for twenty-eight oh three East Airport Road, Elmer and Betty Weemer.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smythe?
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Is there any, maybe one of the staff persons can tell me. Looking at the city map, this property is far and away from any contiguous, whatever that word is, section of the city. It's going to be an island. It looked like a good three-quarters of a mile from any other part of the city boundaries. What is the process? What is the thinking about? I know that the city would like to basically incorporate a full and complete boundary over a long period of time, and this must be future planning. And of course, the individuals are willing to be annexed, which also brings some question about facilities and infrastructure, which is something which the city may be responsible for. What is the thinking about accepting a project that is so far from the city boundary?
This actually is not an annexation, per se. It's what we've begun to call pre-annexation agreement. We don't expect this property to annex into the city anytime soon, but pursuant to our agreement with the sanitary district, we do enter into these pre-annexation agreements anytime there's connections to sanitary sewers. And that way, at such time as the city limits are contiguous, they would be obligated to annex. So it's a pre-planning exercise. In this particular case, this even went to the planning commission to set, preset the zonings would be consistent with our comprehensive plan and with the uses in that area. So we do see a lot of these. They happen often on an urgent basis because there's that connection needed, a septic tank is failing, and it's just a consequence of, we think, good interjurisdictional planning with our sanitary district to make sure that as we grow, we'll be able to annex these properties and not have such an irregular boundary or locations that are sewered but aren't incorporated.
So this is not an annexation, per se. This is just a contingent, pre-expert thing. The property needed a, let's see, what was it? It was a lift station.
Lift station.
A lift station. And that would be maintained by the current owners, and if they should subdivide, there would have to be the formation of a neighborhood association to maintain that. So there would be no financial drain or obligation on the city for, and I assume that the lift station has to do with sewers and sewer maintenance, right? Okay. Well, I wondered about that.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yeah, one question is, will the R-two zoning, when the parcel comes into the city, allow more development than the current county CR, well, more development on that parcel? I know no residential uses are allowed in CR, and yet this is a use there that's non-conforming. Will there be additional houses that could be built if the full parcel becomes R-two in Urbana?
No, it's already pretty well-built out and would match the R-two. So it's already pretty much exceeded the CR zoning. There's four houses on the lot, and we would require, if there's any further development, that it be subdivided. So we felt the R-two was the best match.
Any other questions? This is a roll call. The mayor gets to vote. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Yes. The motion carries. Next is resolution number two thousand and five dash oh eight dash fourteen R, a resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning map, twenty-three oh five East Oaks Road, William and Peggy Campbell.
This case has gone through the planning commission and finally come to the council. Earlier, I dropped off a copy of the resolution for you.
Would you speak more into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Staff's original recommendation in this case, prior to the planning commission meeting, was to recommend a no protest. In our findings to support that position, we had stressed that the special conditions that were going to be placed on the subject property, as presented in the County Department of Planning and Zoning staff memorandum, would ensure that the development on the property would be compatible with the City of Urbana Comprehensive Plan and future zoning, probable future zoning for the location. However, at the County Zoning Board of Appeals public hearing, the case was held, and the Champaign County State's attorney advised against placing conditions on the rezoning, and the CCZBA voted that the proposed zoning not be enacted. With that vote, which was a recommendation of denial, the county ZBA did not endorse the conditions. Due to that change, planning staff issued a revised memo at the August fourth hearing and reversed the recommendation and advised planning commission to recommend a protest to the city council. Staff had done that because if the rezoning were finally approved by the full county board, the rezoning would occur without any restrictions. And we felt, staff felt that that was not compatible with the comprehensive plan. It was not compatible with probable future developments in the area. The planning commission voted four ayes and zero nays to approve the recommendation, and later on August eighth, the Champaign County Existing Land Use Committee, sorry, Environmental and Land Use Committee, voted on the matter and recommended a denial to the full county board. County board will make its final decision at the August fifteenth public meeting.
Did you say August fifteenth?
I did. I don't think that's right. That's today.
The fifteenth?
Yeah. I can't think of what day it was.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Bowersachs, is there a second? Ms. Chenoweth?
I just wanted to clarify that to support the staff's recommendation, council members would vote no. Is that correct?
No, they would vote yes.
To a resolution protest.
It's always difficult to figure out the double negatives. So you're recommending
yes. Okay.
Okay, are you seconding the motion?
No.
So we can have discussion?
I will second it.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question. What are the practical implications to the petitioner?
Practical implications are that the property will not be rezoned from Ag-two to County Rural Trade Center, which is B-one. The business that has been located there for the past eighteen months, which is automobile minor repair business, which is currently not in conformance with the county zoning ordinance, that business would have to be moved. Or they would have to apply again or seek a way to redefine the business.
Or the county could agree to the modifications, right?
The county board, yes, they would have the option of placing those conditions back on it, although those had been recommended against.
Mr. Roberts?
I guess I'm kind of wondering, in the same line perhaps as Lynn, this structure has been employed as a business for quite a few years.
Correct.
But just not an automobile repair business. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if it had ever been an automobile business before. It was a sheet metal stamping business, but yes, it's been.
It was a stamping business?
It was a sheet metal stamping business at one point.
Is that, that would not, is that compatible with the zoning as it had stood all this time before rezoning?
I would have to consult the county's ordinance. I do not recall.
It's mostly residential, a street, is that correct?
It's really a county road. There are, there's one residence next door to it. There is a trailer surrounded by a fence that's disused on another side of it. I think most of the residences are probably quarter mile, half mile or farther away from it. So it is essentially really very rural. The comprehensive plan, Urbana's comprehensive plan, future land use designation for the area is residential, and that recommendation for future land use stops at the road. We have no recommendation for the north side of the road, but we do recommend a future residential to the south.
And it's on the south side?
On the south side, yeah. So in the future, we anticipate that there will be some kind of residential development in the area. Exactly what it would be zoned, I couldn't say for sure. Probably R-two, maybe some R-three. Within an area like that, it is possible that B-one neighborhood business would be located in the area in the future. If it was zone county B-one Rural Trade Center, the direct translation from county zoning to city zoning is from the County Rural Trade Center to City of Urbana B-one neighborhood business. But those are really very different kinds of business zones.
Yeah. So there's a potential, if the rezoning eventually occurred, that that building could be used in some kind of commercial way. The owners could still rent it out or lease it out and gain some kind of an income from it.
Oh, yes, yeah. I mean, it's not a question of them not being able to rent it. There are quite a few different businesses that are, yeah, that are permitted in the Ag-two zone. Actually, there's more different businesses permitted in the Ag-two zone than there is in the B-one Rural Trade Center zone. So it's not a question of the landowner not being able to get something out of his property. It would be unfortunate, however, for the current tenant.
Ms. Barnes?
How do we get into this type of situation where you end up having to relocate a business after eighteen months of being there?
Essentially, what happened, my understanding, is the current owners purchased the property. They advertised it as being available for renting and didn't consult the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Or didn't look at it closely. I think most people would not have imagined that this wasn't permissible.
Right. Mr. Lewis?
Are there repercussions to the seller or persons that have occupied this for the last eighteen months?
I am not qualified to say what the repercussions might be to the current tenants. There would probably be a certain number of business financial impacts to having to move. How they could address those, or whether or not the landlord has other properties available if he could move them to, I couldn't say.
Any other questions? Mr. Smythe?
Just sort of to follow up on Lynn's ideas, I think a lot of, some of this stuff comes to us because it's in the mile and a half jurisdiction. These county things, the zoning board of appeals issues are outside of the city, just like with the sewer thing. They come to us because they're in that mile and a half, which is essentially a planning area for the city.
Was that your question? I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood.
No, my question was how we ended up in this position tonight, and you answered it. It's always good to hear that background as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Yeah, I guess just as a follow-up, tell me if I'm wrong, the situation that they would be in if we protest, if the county board continues to not amend the zoning, as is expected based on the county board committee's vote so far, would be the same situation they've been in for the last eighteen months. We're still at square one. There is some possible resolution, maybe with conditions, maybe with some change of zoning that could be possible, but just, but we could not allow it to go forward without any conditions. So we're not really making things any worse. We're just saying that this, the solution to let them do whatever they want there and to revert the zoning without any conditions is not a state, a position that we would take. Let me re-ask the question, so I can be clear. We're not, we're not making the situation any different than it has been for the last eighteen months, correct?
That's correct. I would say so.
This is a simple voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Now we have ordinance number two thousand and five dash oh eight dash one two seven, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to amend section nine dash ten, interim development ordinance creating a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day moratorium on outdoor advertising sign structures for up to an additional three-hundred days, plan case number nineteen forty-four dash T dash oh five.
I handed out a revised ordinance with a very minor modification suggested by the legal staff, and this would be to state that this be for an additional period not to exceed three-hundred days. So the not to exceed was preferable to up to. And again, we're adding this on top of a currently ongoing three-hundred-and-sixty-five day moratorium. So this would extend this an approximately additional ten-month period.
Is there a motion to approve? Then we'll have discussion, okay?
Yeah, I move that we approve this ordinance to extend the zoning ordinance, section nine dash ten, not to exceed three-hundred days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Smythe?
I guess the three-hundred days struck me as sort of an odd number. Is there a particular reason why you think you can get it done in three-hundred days, and, you know, why not just extend it another year?
We're really trying to work in good faith, do a diligent thorough job, but also not to keep dragging this out. So we're thinking in terms of workload of three-month increments. Nine months seemed a little tight, so we add another month, but we wanted to show that good faith effort of trying to bring it in in under two years. And both the industry representatives did support the extension.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Smythe, and this is a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next, we have a study session on possible text amendments to the Comprehensive Sign Regulations, Article nine of the zoning ordinance pertaining to outdoor advertising sign structures.
While they're getting set up, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Bixler, and this was formerly Rebecca Guess, so we don't have two Rebekas. Rebecca has been our planning intern for the last year and has been working diligently on the issue of OASS or billboard regulations. She's done some excellent research. She's done some excellent research, which she's shared with the plan commission at one of their recent meetings, and is prepared to present different approaches to billboard regulation. And another goal this evening in sharing this information is to receive some feedback and input from council members, which in combination with the very good questions and comments by the plan commission, we hope to garner enough information to proceed with a text amendment approach for an upcoming case.
Okay, you should have received a copy of the memo that I presented at the July 21st plan commission meeting. And I'm just going to go through that again with you as I did with them. I'll start with just a brief history. And in the 1980s, there was a lawsuit against the city. And the settlement agreement that came out of that prevented the city from doing anything more restrictive as to the size, number, spacing, setback, lighting, amortization, or the definition of sign structures. And that lasted until January of 2004. So now that agreement is expired. And we no longer have to be under those restrictions. During the time though, we did come up with some design requirements. And from what arose out of that, there were nine new permits when that moratorium ended. And some of the billboards, we can show you pictures of, that we saw as problematic. If you look at set one of the images, it's number eight. And it's located at 102 West University Avenue. And we saw that as problematic simply because it was blocking other businesses. And I think there was an office building there. And the tenant was looking out directly at the billboard and they saw that as problematic. Also, number three, or set three, number 21. The actual sign inside of the structure is missing at this point. But that billboard was particularly problematic because it was so low to the ground. And you can see a new curb system was put in, but before there was none. And so automobiles would often run into that billboard and drive directly into it. So this led to a new moratorium, which we are currently under. And we've been working to look for a solution that would allow billboards to work in our community in a way that was a benefit rather than a hindrance to development. In the memo also, we outlined some goals. Starting on page three and then page four, there are a list of goals from the comprehensive sign regulations. Those are to reduce congestion of land, air, and space, to preserve and protect property values, to establish reasonable standards for the use of signs in order to maintain and encourage business activity and development, and to protect and enhance the physical appearance of the community and the scenic value of the surrounding area. Just underneath that, the goals of our comprehensive plan, a lot of them deal with beautifying the community. And specifically, at the bottom, goal 24-2 says, "Encourage the beautification of entryway corridors and major transportation corridors in Urbana." And goal 26-2, "Promote the beautification of commercial areas, especially along University Avenue, Cunningham Avenue, and Philo Road." Also, we found some costs and benefits to billboards within our community. And those are on page six of the memo. And basically, billboards are an inexpensive way for people to advertise. And community members often use them as a source of advertising. But also, we can see them, as I explained earlier, in development. They can create problems for viewing other signs. And also, if they're not at the right height, they can cause problems with traffic. Also, fiscally, Urbana doesn't receive any tax dollars from billboards because they're considered personal property. And this is something that the plan commission had asked about, so I thought I would mention it here. The landowner receives rent from the billboard companies to have the structure on their property, but the city doesn't tax for that, so. We came up with a few options, just as starting points, for what to do with billboards. The first option would be to do nothing and leave the regulations the way that they are. This alternative would lead to the same things that we saw previous, where there were proliferation of permits applied for and potentially billboards that could be hazardous for our community. The second option would be improving existing regulations. This could be done through design regulations, restrictions on height, size, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Also, considering billboards as a special use. This would, this would require a new billboard to come through, I think, plan commission, correct? Is it special use? Plan commission. And then we would have a chance, the city would have a chance to say what sort of things should be done to the structure, which would fit better with the surrounding context. Also, we could consider spacing and corridors, increasing the space. We could consider billboards as a principal use, which would require them, they could no longer be an accessory use, would be the principal use of the property. Also, tri-vision messaging would essentially create three billboards in one, where the message sort of switches around. And there's a time limit as to how quickly they can switch. The third option that we listed here is the cap and replace. Right now, we have 35 billboards in our community, and I think there are four permits. And so potentially between 35 and 40 would be the cap number. And the most restrictive would be a one for one within the same location, meaning that if a billboard were to go down, and it could be reconstructed in that same location, but only that location. Along with that, we could consider transfer development rights, meaning that if one billboard went down in one place, they could reconstruct in another area of the city. And in order to increase regulation on that, also, we may want to consider special use for that option. And also, one thing I've seen is a ratio replacement requirement, where if a billboard went down in one location, they'd have the option to build, or maybe if they'd have to take down four in order to build one more in another location. And this would essentially reduce the total number of billboards within the community over time. And the last alternative listed here is prohibition. And it would ban new construction of billboard structures. They would become nonconforming. And so as the repairs became a higher percentage, say it was 50% of the value to replace it, then they would no longer be able to replace the structure. And eventually, all billboards within the community would disappear. And the same with adding amortization or sunset period. They would have a certain number of years before the structures would have to be taken down. And so these are some of the starting points that we've looked into. And we're interested in hearing your opinions and your questions about this. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Roberts?
Well, first, I think this is such an important topic. And, you know, we've looked, we've had this in our packet for a couple of days. I can't imagine actually fulfilling your need for total sensible input just in this one session of 20 minutes. It would almost be that it would be useful to have a study period or something to respond. Because there's aspects of each of the four plans that have merit and could be discussed pretty seriously, you know, or a combination of the four different proposals you have here. So really, what do you want to hear this evening? Do you want, I mean, is this, is this an invitation to the council to begin considering and then giving you feedback over a period of time, like the next week or something? Or are you expecting to try to take the next step soon? And you want, I mean, I guess I'd like to know what parameters of this conversation are going to go to.
There is time, we've added the 10 months. So we want to receive whatever comments you have this evening or in coming weeks, questions that you might want us to research and get back together. We'll begin to try to put together some possible text amendment language. And when we think we're far enough along, we'll start a more formal process with the plan commission and public hearings. And I know we're going to be hearing input from the community and from the industry representatives. We're just trying to get the ball rolling. So we certainly don't expect that we'll get a perfect sense this evening. But we just wanted to start the discussion going. And, you know, it is complicated and will take some time. So, you know, we do have an industry representative who would like to talk after our staff. So this is just beginning the conversation. Mr. Smythe?
That perfect segue is because the way I'm looking at this, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read the plan commission minutes on this. They're very educational.
They are.
I read through them and there's a lot of, a lot of the thoughts I was having are echoed by comments here. In particular, draw your attention to page 15 of the plan commission minutes of July 21st. The third paragraph, Mr. Grosser commented on the degree of beautification in the comprehensive plan. I think that's a, that's a major point. You know, we're after beautification here. That's our, our goal is to, is to work with the comprehensive plan and to meet those goals. I think that Mr. Hopkins had a number of very valuable comments throughout these. I think he presented a very sensible approach, one where he accepts a certain number of signs, but under a number of controls. Personally, I think some design and special use issues, you know, that to me struck me as one way to achieve some of the goals here. If we have design criteria, if we have special use permit for this, we'll be able to locate some of these better than they are currently. I'd also personally be interested in working with the industry reps to move some of the problem signs in some way. You know, I understand they've got an investment in them. But, but I think that I'd be very interested in, and I know that several of them have offered to, their services to the council and the plan commission to work with city staff on doing this. And I think that'd be pretty valuable. Obviously, we have plan commission people involved in this. And it may be that at some point, we have a joint meeting with the plan commission specifically to talk about this. I mean, that would minimize the staff need to talk to two bodies at, at two different times. And I'm always interested in making staff, staff work efficient here. I think, let's see. Mrs. Stakes' comment on page 16, the second paragraph struck me as a, and Mr. Pollack's stuff struck me, gave me, you know, that was a positive reaction to that. And to the, the first two paragraphs on the top of page 17. Again, again, Mr. Hopkins talking about the use of, the idea of a special use. And, and Mr. Pollack similarly. The idea of some reviewability by the city when dealing with these signs may be a very appropriate way to go. So with that, I'll shut up.
Mr. Roberts?
Well, let Mr. Lewis go first.
Mr. Lewis, sorry.
I had one, and that was, as I was looking it over, and I think an element that would be very important would be having the communities involved as well. I think something's wrong with my mic. That's why I got all the way down my throat right now. I think having the community involved in some way in, in the special use or the application, design of signs. Because I know for a fact, in some communities, some vendors might have a special lure that they want to bring to that particular area. And I think it would be very important for a city to be cognizant of that as they develop these various signs that go in areas. And a community involvement would be an excellent opportunity for that.
Mr. Roberts?
The only, the only preliminary note that I made when I was reading the report was that I would like to have staff and whoever is working on this, I guess us, consider what are the new trends in design and in considering urban development and streetscaping, which have changed the, the general direction and feeling about billboards in America generally. And because I think that whereas maybe there was a period, just as in all things, interests and taste and accustomed modes change as the, we go through the years and people's awareness changes. And this can happen in a lot of different places and how we look at our streetscapes. We don't take them for granted as we might have in the 50s and 60s. We have a more thoughtful approach typically today. And there are some billboards in the four or five, the three or four pages of displays that I would point out as being an interesting and different way of approaching a billboard signage. Specifically, number, on image set number three, number 27 and the 30-32, where the billboard is at a lower position and it is tied to the ground by pedimental kind of footing, completely different than the traditional billboard display, which is up on a post high above your heads. Reduces visual clutter and changes the general appearance of the neighborhood in a positive way while still allowing for the square footage and signage. And so I think that new trends in displaying is important. Without, perhaps, my personal take is that I'm not as enamored of automated billboardings, where panels are flipping or lights are blinking. And I would say that this is a direction that I'm not as fond of going into. But I realize that there's a technology change that's also occurring in the advertising business. And I think that we need to decide whether we're interested in those changes or not.
Any other questions? Ms. Barnes?
I would just make note of the four kind of options that you've lined out here, that I, that option number one and option number four seem to be extremes. And just my own personal opinion would be that we would stay away from the extremes and work towards some middle ground, which I think the combinations, you know, or aspects of both two and three, both have merit and are something that we should consider, as opposed to a prohibition or as opposed to doing nothing. So in terms of just trimming down your work or investigation, it might be good for us to give some direction in that manner.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yeah, I did hear in studying this issue that the question is, which of these options are we willing to talk about further and discuss more and make more concrete? And I feel like after reading and examining this, and this is our first study session, but I feel like the thing that struck me most was how in our comprehensive plan, we talked about beautifying these corridors. We talked about the streets that we want to be streets that attract people in our gateways to our community. And when I looked at the pictures of the billboards and when I drive around town and see them, that seems to me incongruous most of the time with the, with the goals of beautification. And with the exception of a very few billboards, and Mr. Hopkins was good about mentioning some that seemed to fit in, it seems to me that they aren't helping us with our goals of beautifying and of attracting people in and of making corridors. I, for one, am interested in further studying the eventual sunset, even if it's over 15 or 20 years. That's an option that I personally am still willing to discuss further and hear more about. And I don't know, you know, tonight is sort of a night where I think we can all sort of say how comfortable we are with these different possibilities to give direction to the staff on which even we consider more. That's where I stand right now.
Ms. Chanaway?
First, I'll say that I'm a business owner and our business consumes billboard services in town. And for council members who don't know, billboard services in Champion in Urbana are significantly inflated in price from other places. So something to know, that's probably why the billboard companies actually support the moratorium, because it caps the number of billboards, so you have greater demand than there is supply. I think that billboards, something that has never made sense to me is that we restrict our local businesses to have signs, sometimes that are about that big, hanging outside in downtown. And yet, in downtown and actually throughout our community, we allow up to- And yet, in downtown and actually throughout our community, we allow up to three hundred square feet of billboardage next to a business that's paying property tax in our town and sales tax often, and we restrict the size of their sign to a significantly smaller space. So, I personally consider billboards to be unfair to our local businesses. They're unfair. We, if, if the size was different, if, et cetera, I might think differently, but it's such a huge proportional difference between the size of billboards and the size that we allow our businesses to have in terms of signage. And in fact, in some cases, we have billboards that actually block the signs, like we do on North Cunningham Avenue, of our local businesses who are contributing to our tax base and our sales tax base as well. So, there seems to be a problem here, that we have somehow prioritized billboards, and I don't mean this body we, but I think even as a culture, we prioritize billboards. I support amortization of billboards everywhere but the highway. So, basically, a removal of billboards in places where that scale is not appropriate. And to, and I do think that highways is an appropriate place for billboards of that size. I think that when you are a car going that fast and you're that far away from a sign, that's when a sign needs to be as big as it is. Other times, it, those billboards are, are typically much larger than they need to be to get their point across. And I don't quite understand, we understand that with our businesses, we don't seem to understand this with billboards. The, the, there's a couple of things in terms of, comments in terms of the locations of our billboards. And I say this having thought about this for about five years, because when I first got on council, I think Tim Ross was here, and he had devoted his life to studying billboards at that time. He was a planner at the time. He did a huge amount of research on this with Exwood. We, council had a discussion, we had a, a good discussion about it, lots of information. So, Philo Road is a, is moving towards a residential and neighborhood business district with some kind of corridor businesses. I don't think of Philo Road as appropriate for billboards. The second thing is, as you're going down University Avenue and you are getting to the point of Broadway Avenue, there's such a congestion of billboards at that location, at that university and Broadway Avenue, that I consider it to kind of completely destroy the visual entrance into our downtown. That, that spot in particular, that pretty much from Ray Street to, to Cunningham along University Avenue is, is a real destruction of a kind of aesthetic of a corridor into our downtown. I would say the same thing, and I know that the university has also raised concerns about the, the visual coming into our community along Lincoln Avenue and university. It's complete wall of billboards. And something about billboards that I think is a little bit different than other ways of advertising is that it is not a choice to look at billboards. It's actually like, as humans, we're programmed to pay attention to what's around us, and particularly as drivers, we need to pay attention to what's around us. And so, it's constantly the case that you get this, you get this messaging. So, so I think that it's important for us to, to consider the public benefit versus the public cost. And I think the public cost is that you don't have a choice. You're actually forced to kind of look at these things. And, and, you know, all this sexual indio about Fox News and all, just horrible stuff that I don't, I don't want to have in my head, and I don't want to have to look at, but it's not an option for me. So, I think that by allowing this, you, you have this, you, you have this situation. So, I think it's important for the public good for us to, to really look and see what is the, what is the kind of appropriate restrictions to put on this. In particular, I, I definitely draw the line with downtown and near downtown. In fact, I was upset, as most people know and remember, about the billboard on Main Street and, and Fine Street. I just think it's completely inappropriate at that location. And I understand that it was a part of an agreement to keep the courthouse downtown. I understand the history. History aside, let's look at the future. I want to see that billboard gone. I don't think it serves our purposes. It's a visual blight in downtown. So, let's, let's see what we can do moving forward, and let's see if we can amortize and do some switch off. There's not a whole lot of billboards near the highway. Perhaps we can allow some of the billboards to switch their locations closer down, down, to downtown to the highway setting. That's why I have to say this.
I was, wanted to get some clarification. By highway, you mean the interstate? Okay.
I'm sorry, the interstate, yes.
And just a note, we have overlapping jurisdiction with IDOT, which can sometimes result in problematic placement as well, but we'd want to look at making sure those two regulations work together better than currently. Just one other clarification, that we do restrict billboards to certain corridors, but there are some non-conforming locations. So, they're not allowed in all business zones, but as you can plainly see on the maps, there are certain corridors where they're permitted.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, could you clarify exactly what IDOT says and allows?
Representative from Adams can tell you a lot more about this, but basically, their right-of-way, their jurisdiction extends six hundred and sixty feet beyond their right-of-way, which can be quite extensive, because in some locations, they have a lot of right-of-way. And per very early legislation, they look for zero visibility from the interstate. So, as Ms. Jonathan was stating, in many ways, interstates and interchanges are appropriate locations for billboards, because they're targeted to motorists and can mention goods and services you might find in the community. But the federal and state legislation that seeks to preserve the scenic character of our highways can be at cross purposes with local regulation. And we really had quite a dispute with IDOT about one particular billboard, and they, they did not back down. So, we'll need to do a better job, but basically, it's just whether it's visible, and they don't care if it's blocking a business or doesn't meet another portion of your regulation. They're quite strict on that, but I'm sure Mr. Naples can explain a little more about IDOT position. He does often need to get permits both from, both from the city and from IDOT for billboard locations.
Ms. Barnes?
I would be certainly open to discussing and looking at the sign, signing ordinance for small businesses or businesses, you know, that are in the, in our community, because that doesn't seem to be reasonable. On, on the other hand, I would hope that, I, I believe there certainly is a way that we could both beautify, you know, the use of signage and allow some type of large signage. And I know that there's communities out there that, and you guys may have already looked at some, where you could maybe bring examples to us in terms of pictures and show us some examples where communities have kind of been able to meet in the middle in terms of, you know, beautification, as well as allowing businesses within the community to utilize larger signage in certain corridors. So, I hope that maybe we'll be able to see some examples, maybe from some other communities that might be like us.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, well, actually, the, the last couple of things remind me that it's sort of hard to look at this without also considering the sign ordinance in general. You know, and, and so, there is a considerable amount of overlap here, and if we're interested in signage in general, you know, we're setting ourselves, you know, we've got ten months plus how much more time? What's the total time now?
Just three weeks.
We've got, okay, so we've got just under eleven months to look at this and maybe consider the rest of the signage, because, you know, it may be that, especially as we look at other communities, if we look at communities that have good, what we consider good or, or beautiful signs or whatever, progressive sign ordinance and so on, it may be that there we can find aspects of what we'd also want to do in terms of, of outdoor advertising sign structures as well. So, it may be that we need to, and I know this is one of our goals, is to look at the sign ordinance in general. It may be very, it may be very, very hard to look at only one aspect of this without looking at the other. I don't know what our staffing situation is on doing that. And of course, we have talked about hiring a consultant to help us with some aspects of this. So, that may be another item that we need to, to consider here, because if we, we need to get this done in a timely fashion, it would be unfair to expect our existing staff to take the entire load.
If there are no further questions for our staff, I'd like to call, I'd like to thank you first of all, and ask Mr. Ron Naples from Adams Outdoor Advertising.
Is that his card we have here?
Would you like to state your name and your address, please?
My name is Ron Naples. I'm with Adams Outdoor, which is located in Champaign, seven oh four North Neal Street. I believe my statement was included in your packet. Since you have it, I don't think I would read it verbatim unless you would like me to do so.
It's fine.
I would like to make a couple of points about the statement. I think it is important that in some form or another, that Urbana maintained billboards. I think it's, it would be wrong to deny the most effective form of advertising to local businesses and charities. In addition, you would be banning all future uses of billboards, some of which we may not even be aware of yet. Billboards are starting now to, you, they're being used for Amber Alerts. They could be used for disaster warnings in the future. There's many uses for, very good uses for billboards. There's an immediacy to them that you can't get anywhere else. I would also like to point out that it is definitely possible for billboards to exist in any city, no matter how picturesque. Billboards exist in almost every city in this country. San Francisco has billboards. Charlotte has billboards. We have billboards in Charlotte, which is, you know, one of the tree cities in this country. So, it's, it's obviously possible to work together without just declaring war on each other and trying to eliminate the billboards altogether. I would like to go over a few of the pertinent billboard facts contained in my statement. Billboards do not lower property values, nor do they prevent development. I think the best case around here would be five oh five North Cunningham, which is the university auto park. There's been a billboard there for many, many years. It never hurt them, and it's not hurting their sale of the property. It didn't lower the property values over those decades. And soon, there will be, I'm sorry, I forget what's going in there. But something else is going in there while they move further north. What was my other, the, another thing I think is important is that billboards need to blend into the community. There's some counter intuitiveness that goes on in that you don't want them to be eyesores and stand alone by themselves, yet you don't want them to blend into your community either. There's a balance there. If you make them a principal use, where they do exist, they will exist on a big piece of property all by themselves. That is a huge waste of property, not to mention, you would be drawing even more attention to my billboard. So, I think principal use in general is counterintuitive to regulating billboards. As far as my statement goes, I think the, or the other thing I wanted to mention was just compensation versus amortization. If we begin to go down that road, the, the federal government would be highly involved in that decision-making process, because the great majority of the billboards in Urbana are on state-controlled roads, which has been your rule for many years since, since the lawsuit settlement. Since the billboards are on state-controlled roads, the federal government controls the various forms of compensation. So, if you were to make the billboards, make us take the billboards down now or amortize them, whether it's now or fifteen years into the future, when the billboard comes down, they have to be justly compensated. And if, and please, feel free to check with IDOT, because I want, I confirmed with IDOT before coming here to make sure the information I was giving you was accurate. But if, if the city was to amortize the billboards and they would come down, the state would be forced by federal law to pay us just compensation if the city chose not to. You can discuss that with IDOT. They indicated to me that they would recoup those, the monies that they pay the billboard companies from you through your, your highway dollars. Again, I don't want to get too much into your business. A couple of comments, additional comments I'd like to make from tonight's discussion is that the, I agree with some of the comments were made tonight about it would be inappropriate to leave the rules the way they are once the moratorium expires. The, some of the rules just don't make good sense, and it'll just open up too much competition again, and billboards will end up in too many places. One of the problems that Urbana has, from my point of view, is that you only allow billboards on two roads. Thus, you're forcing us to stack the billboards as closely together as possible. If you were to allow them to spread out on the appropriate roads, we don't want to be in residential, we don't want to be in agricultural, rural communities, commercial areas, industrial areas, then the billboards, all on their own over time, would spread out, because we'd get a wider audience if we were allowed to move some of our billboards from university or Cunningham over to Route one thirty, again, another state road. That's the biggest problem I see with the current ordinance. The, personally, I would propose a standard cap and replace billboard ordinance. I think leaving the ordinance the way it is is a little too extreme one way. Banning them, obviously, I would believe, is a little too extreme the other way. A standard cap and replace, especially if you opened up some additional roads, however many, whatever ones would be deemed okay with the city, would allow them to spread out over time, would keep, every time we put one up, we'd have to take one down, yet it would leave us the leeway to conduct our business in the way we need to. There's certain rules you can make that would be a de facto banning of billboards. If you said, you could have billboards, but they can only be one foot square. Well, that's obviously banning billboards, because our advertisements would not be read from the road at one square foot. Or you could say, another obviously extreme example, you could say, you can have billboards any square footage you want, but they have to be seven thousand feet in the air. Well, again, it's a de facto banning of billboards, because the motorists, again, cannot see our ads. So, if you allow us, under cap and replace, to maintain the billboards, also is very important, over time, on our own, we will improve and enhance these billboards. I've met for months and months, not lately, because I no longer work in this market, but over the past year, I met with Public Works and various, very, various other departments in the city to redo the giant billboard that's at Fine and Main. It's a huge billboard. It's one-sided now, the backside of it's rusted, and it sits on I-beams. We don't want it to look that way. Unfortunately, it's hard to get that structure redone. We are working on it. I think we have a plan that will work, pending what, how we come out of the moratorium. So, I believe I'm starting to ramble, so I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions?
Thank you. I have a, a couple of questions. Did you say that they're only on state-controlled roads? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's the current ordinance.
You said there are only two streets in Urbana? Did you say that also?
Yes. Now, there are other billboards on, from before the current ordinance, like the ones on Philo Road. Those were erected before the current ordinance. I believe also, there are minor exceptions in the current ordinance, like the very north end of Lincoln, I think is an exception. But other than that, they're only on state-controlled roads.
Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Bowers?
Yeah, as I scan through the images, I see, for example, on page one, as I try to identify who's posting these billboards, I can identify Winter Wheat Antiques, which is a, a local business here located in Champaign County, and two McDonald's, and a Car X, and a National Car Company. And when I look on page two, I can identify three McDonald's, a State Farm, and O'Brien's Auto Park, which is a local business. And on page four, Fox Doritos, one McDonald's, a TV station, a Dish TV network. And on page four, Fox Doritos, One McDonald's, a TV station, a Dish TV network, and another of the same car ad. And so this is obviously, you know, just a sampling. Whenever these pictures were taken, it isn't really representative. But I wonder if you can give us statistics about the percentage of billboards placed, on average, if you have 33 billboards or something posted in Urbana, what percentage of them at any given time are posted by a charity? And then, secondly, by a local business that's, that's owned here?
I don't really know those numbers. I don't work on the sales side, which is where those, those numbers would come from. But they're, I would be comfortable in saying that on any day, any given day, there is a public service advertisement up in Urbana. A lot. The last one I saw was for the Don Moyers Boys and Girls Club, but that, again, I haven't been in town for a while, so I don't know.
So you estimate maybe one in 33 is, is a public service?
Not necessarily. But I would say it's about 5% on any given day, maybe. But again, I'm guessing. I don't work on the sales side, nor do I work and handle our public service.
Can you get us those numbers?
Sure, sure.
Five percent would be two out of 33, or two out of 36. 3% would be closer to one sign out of.
Right. And we may be not on the same page as far as what is public service. Our definition of public service excludes a lot of entities that you may think of as public service.
I'd be particularly interested in locally-owned businesses, meaning, you know, not McDonald's or not franchises of a national business, but locally-owned businesses.
You wouldn't consider McDonald's a local business?
I'd consider them a national chain, even though individual franchises are operating. And then, secondly, charities, you know, 501(c)(3), tax, tax status charities. Those would be the two categories I'd be particularly interested in.
Mr. Roberts.
One of the, the discussion that, in the paperwork that we received, talked about, talked about the large 300-square-foot billboards. It also mentioned a smaller size called a junior billboard. How many of those does your firm have in this town?
I believe none. Juniors, you speak of?
Yes.
I don't think we have any juniors.
And they're more like, I can't remember the size, but they're more like 18 by 20, or they're fairly smaller, much smaller.
Juniors are 6 by 12.
6 by 12, okay.
Who owns the, the billboards on Philo Road?
Adams does. Those are poster units. They're 12 by 25.
Those are 12 by 25, okay.
A question.
Mr. Chiniewicz?
You had, I had mentioned the, having billboards near the interstate, and you had also mentioned a desirability of opening up 130 to billboards. Do you have an interest in billboards at the interstate, and are there barriers to you having billboards posted at the interstate? And could you describe a little bit those barriers?
Sure. The, our interest in a location is always based on traffic. So in general, the interstate is a very attractive location for us. Unfortunately, the barriers to putting a billboard on the interstate are immense. Basically, the, the state handles the enforcement of whether or not you can put a billboard on the interstate, but they don't actually make the rules. The federal government has made the rules through the Bonus Act, which originally said, "If you have a program that controls billboards along interstate highways, we will give you highway funds. And if you agree to be in this program, you must follow these rules, or you will lose your highway funds." The basic rule is commonly referred to as the Rule of 59, which says you can put a billboard on the interstate if you can prove that that property, I'm generalizing, if you can prove that property is used for commercial industrial purposes now and has been for every single day back to September 21st, 1959. That is almost impossible to deal with. Thus, interstates are ruled out. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little dry mouth here. The interstate, or IDOT controls the area from the right-of-way fence 660 feet back. So even if you're not in there right-of-way, you can run into problems. This is what happened at 1710 North Cunningham, the ominous low billboard. IDOT controls that area. Their authority supersedes the city's authority in that area because of the federal government. So whereas we would have built that sign to a typical 30, 35-feet height, up and out of the way of the standard on-premise signs, which is usually why billboards are up higher, so you can see the on-premise signs and the signs on the buildings, you know, underneath them. IDOT decided that billboard had to be built at that height and not one inch higher, because if it was higher, you could see it from the interstate, which is ludicrous, it's over 2,000 feet away and parallel to the interstate. If you're driving on 74 and you read the ad on that billboard, you should not have a driver's license because you're not doing it correctly. But those are the problems. When you get anywhere near the interstate, you run into, they're really not state problems, they're federal problems.
Is that because the 660 feet is measured from the exit ramp or something?
It's measured from the end of their right-of-way, which is usually the fence. You see all those right-of-way fences out there? You go to their right-of-way, and then an additional 660 feet. Now, the problem up at 1710 North Cunningham is that the state's right-of-way is extremely large there from previous work they've done there with on-ramps and off-ramps. So it actually goes up to that light at Kenyon, I think that, it's basically to that intersection is their right-of-way. So then you gotta go from Kenyon, another 660 feet beyond. They control all that, at least as far as billboards go.
Mr. Lewis.
Was that the state or federal that had the controls?
It's basically state enforcement, state enforcement of federal guidelines. Now, the state can say, "You know what? We're not doing this Rule of 59 anymore." But if they do that, they have to pay back all the federal highway money. So they're not going to do that. So it's really a federal problem, and that's why you only run into it on interstates. Now, Cunningham is itself a state-controlled road, but it doesn't fall under the federal guideline because it's not an interstate. So that's the difference. We still would have to get a state permit to build something on Cunningham, but we don't have to follow that Rule of 59.
That would fly all the way through the town, like 130 or?
Any state-controlled road. Basically, you go down Cunningham till you get to University, and then the state road turns. So if you go south of, if you go south of University and Cunningham, which I believe turns to Vine then at that point, that's not a state-controlled road. And we're not allowed to build there because it's not a state-controlled road. And that's why you see them all the way down Cunningham, and then at University, they turn, and they go either way down University because that's a state-controlled road.
I, I have a question. You said that many cities have billboards, Charlotte and San Francisco, you cited. What about the cities that have banned billboards?
There are some. There's not very many of them. Being in the billboard industry, I haven't really studied the cities that don't have billboards.
You don't have a list on your board?
But you must know their names, right?
Or the, actually, I think there's four states also that don't have.
Four states that have banned billboards?
Yeah, like Hawaii.
Vermont.
Yeah, I believe there's four of them. Again, I know, my mind has blocked out what those four are. But there are, there's lots of success stories. There's lots of, you know, stories of failure where billboards are a blight. I would consider Effingham a good example of that, if you'd like to drive down there and take a look at it.
Sarasota, Florida.
But there are, there are great examples of success where we can work together. And I think it's, I think it's more beneficial to work together. I can tell you, it's a lot less expensive to work together than to go around suing each other, or, I'm sure. I wasn't here back when seeing you poster in Urbana went to court, but I'm sure that was an expensive process. And you came out the other side with an ordinance that wasn't as good as the one I could have written for you. So, you know, you can always fight. I just would, I would choose not to. And I think it, it seems daunting. It seems, to some of you, I'm sure, that there's no way a plan could be devised that would make you happy with billboards. But we've, we've done the same thing with Monticello. Again, that's a pretty sensitive community. And I've done it with Savoy, which, again, they were, although not, you may not describe that corridor as picturesque at the moment, they were extremely concerned that it's an entry corridor to the University of Illinois. So we came with some reasonable compromise as to what we are doing, what we're gonna do. You can't necessarily tell when you drive down 45 what that plan is because you just see the billboards. You don't know behind the scenes what we're doing, what improvements we're making. We're shuffling those boards around. They agreed to keep the seven, but we're moving them. They want them, you know, this one moved further north. They want, you know, different configuration, extra landscaping, things like that, so.
Mr. Smith.
You have a series of things to ask you, then. I guess a challenge that I would present to you, and is there anybody here from Redfish? Oh, okay. I guess would be to bring us examples of what you've done in progressive communities. Where, where, what have you done in, in communities, for example, that use, for their businesses have a pedestal-only type signage for their businesses? And what do you do in those kinds of situations? I'd also be interested in your reaction to some of the topics that have been discussed here by the Plan Commission, scale-appropriate signs, design review, and special use to help control the placement of those signs.
The, I'm sorry, go back to the three.
Well, there are three, three issues that I see. Scale-appropriate, and these all sort of fit in together. Design review, which would be, you know, I guess, scale-appropriate would be part of design review. And then special use, which would help control the whole aspect of placement and, 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 you know, design review and scale-appropriate would be part of that.
Scale-appropriate sounds like euphemism to me, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to discussing and looking at any possibility. It's our flex, I'm sorry.
Let me just say, you know, scale-appropriate, I'm thinking, okay, you've got signs down low, smaller, say, at the corner, you know, that, that Philo Road corridor there where the signs are down and, and low, they seem to be smaller. You've got some smaller ones on 45. There are some smaller ones there that I've seen. I don't know if those are yours or somebody else's. I'm thinking immediately, as you come out, come out of, come out of the airport and you're turning north, strikes me that that, the very first sign I see there is a smaller one. It's not a great big billboard. Or is it just because it's down low? Okay.
It's got, I'm sure it's some perception, but they're all, they're all post, what we call posters, which is 12 feet tall, 25 feet wide.
12 by 25. Maybe it's just because it's not on a pedestal, then. It's just down low.
Could be.
Okay, so I guess that's part of what I'm talking about. I mean, when I talk about scale-appropriate, it's, it's the, the height, location of it, too. But it might also be smaller signage as well, especially as it relates to, say, the other, the other, the flip side of the sign ordinance, which is what local businesses are allowed.
Right. The, the main issue you will get from the industry as far as scalability, especially if you say, "Well, over here, you could have a 50-square-foot billboard. Over here, you could have a 400-square-foot billboard. Here, you can have a 327-square-foot billboard." The problem is, for the industry, is that we operate on standards, just like most industries. Our standard is 12 by 25 and 10 by 30, both of which are 300 square feet. That's developed, I'm sure, over decades and decades because that's what we've been told to do. 300 square feet isn't just your traditional maximum. It's been the maximum all over the country. So it's ended up 300 square feet is the standard. That doesn't mean there aren't other sizes. Somewhere around, there are some 6 by 12s left. There are the huge, huge ones out on the interstate, and there are, in some communities, though not around here, there are what's called bulletins, which are 14 by 48. But around here, we're used, there, there's basically three standards. 14 by 48, 10 by 30, 12 by 25. 12 by 25 is a poster unit. Those are the paper ones that I put up with paper and glue. 10 by 30 are the vinyl units that get rotated around. You get, it's here for 30 days, we take it down, we take it to the next 10 by 30 unit, we put it up, it stays there for 30 days, then we rotate it. So depending on the business, it's cheaper in the long run to make a vinyl and have us rotate it. But if you can't afford that many rotations, it might actually be cheaper to print the paper, which is cheap, you know, early on, if you're not gonna do that much advertising. So there's many, many reasons why those are the standards, and that's the problem we run up against when you start talking about scalability, is that, that those standards run through the printing business, they run through the agencies, they run through, pretty much.
Yeah, the same McDonald's sign that we have here is the same one that I see in San Francisco, and I see in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and the whole bit.
Right. You'll see, and we don't have a lot of that, but you'll see it, the fast food, no matter, no matter whether they're, anything that's been franchised, anything that's more than one of, basically, or more than five of, whatever that is, they save money by printing the same ads for all of them, all the RVs, all the McDonald's, all the Chevy dealers, all the, you know, they have very similar advertising, and then they just send it out to all the dealers. So when you see, you know, a lot of that Dodge advertising or Ford advertising, it gets iffy in that you may want to deem that national advertising, but the local dealer, dealer may have paid for that advertising. It's, it's actually local advertising. It's just the paper was printed at the national level to make it cheap for him.
I guess I'm confused. Why, why do posters go to one size and vinyl on the other? Why, why can't you put vinyl on a 12 by 25?
Well, the, it depends on whether your question is about the actual size or why one unit, why a poster unit won't hold a vinyl.
Yeah. Why, why won't a poster unit hold?
Why won't a poster unit hold a vinyl? They're actually very different structures. The, a poster unit is designed to have paper glued to the front of it, and they'll glue 3, 4, 5, 6, 10 over it over time, however many it'll hold. Then they scrape it. So that's what it's made to do. Now, vinyl has specific walkarounds behind it. You have to be able to get behind it because you have to wrap the vinyl around it, stretch it, and then they ratchet it down. So they're actually different structures, and you can't normally get behind and around a poster unit to wrap a vinyl and ratchet it down, and it's.
So the 10 by 30, then, is a specific industry thing used all over the country?
Yes, yes, those are, all of those, all of the sizes we use are industry-standard sizes.
And the 6 by 12 is used in special circumstances, or?
I think it's, and again, I'm not, I'm not necessarily a billboard historian, but it's, it's an older form that was used for, I'm not sure. They're usually wall mounts. That might, that might be why they were made smaller, because they're usually put on walls. And 6 by 12 is probably a good size for a wall.
So you guys don't use them anymore?
We don't use them anymore. We still have some around, not in Urbana, but we have maybe half a dozen left over in Champaign, and they are all wall mounts.
Mr. Roberts.
This, and I don't want to take this too, this very long, but now, my understanding, am I getting this right, that, that, that individuals, that, that all of the signages and the billboards that you own are actually owned by private individuals on private property? Or you own them and you're, you have them mounted on private property?
Yes. The, the structures belong to us. The actual billboards belong to us.
But they're located on private, individual businesses?
Correct.
Industries?
We lease space.
Who have an agreement with you. So the city doesn't have any contracts with you about billboards?
No, they could if they wanted. We'd be happy to put a billboard on city property.
But mainly, so there's really, so, so we don't have, the city doesn't have any control, actually, over your contracts with the landowner?
The right answer to that is how much?
Well, I guess, I mean, in a way, it's coming to us. I mean, we do have some, some kind of jurisdiction by. But really, what we're doing is we're actually gonna be addressing a situation where we have private property owners, and we want to, we want to, a kind of a, our real, our real ultimate intent is gonna be to dialogue with property owners about billboard ordinances in the city, which you happen to have on their property. But it's the property owner who has the contract with the company. Now, a property owner doesn't necessarily want to, doesn't necessarily need to keep the contract with the company. They could stop having the contract with you, isn't that right?
Sure. When it expires, they don't have.
When it expires, that contract could go up for renegotiation. So I think it'd be wise for the staff, thinking, to, um, consider ways of approaching property owners with suggestions for the improvement of the city, which would perhaps lead to new directions in use of the property on which billboards have been sitting up until this time. Because our real, the real people who, um, in a way, we're addressing the question of the future of our city and how it looks, are the property owners who are making the leases and the contracts with these billboard companies. And, um, it might be another way of thinking about approaching the problem in the future. I just want to put that out there.
I would just caution that, uh, to not run afoul of something called exaction, which...
We don't want to, want to afoul of anything, actually, but we do want to have a dialogue.
And I'm, and I'm, trust me, I'm, I'm here to try to help advise. I mean, I could have, uh, you know, not come here. I mean, I really am trying to help. Obviously, I have something in it. I don't, I don't, I don't own any of these billboards.
Yeah, personally.
But the company has something in it. Obviously, we'd prefer to remain. And I think many business owners, many charities, people in the community wouldn't mind if they remained either. It's my purpose to come here and see if we can reach a middle ground. I know, uh, the industry, not necessarily Adams Outdoor, but, I mean, if you, if you had an open billboard ordinance, you don't, you're not just dealing with Adams Outdoor. You're dealing with any individual in the world who wants to put up a billboard, who may or may not be professional, who may or may not be licensed, uh, who may or may not be local. That's why an open billboard ordinance may not be, you know, the best thing at this point. But the, and I've totally lost my point, I'm sorry. My point, my point is that Adams Outdoor is, is the only, you know, company I can truly speak for. But here, we're here, we're local, we're here to work with you. Obviously, we want to remain. We don't see, uh, a problem with meeting somewhere in the middle to remain that makes everybody, you know, reasonably happy. Everything that's been brought up tonight is stuff, you know, I've heard in other meetings. So it's, it's, obviously, you don't have a unique problem, um, but I wouldn't, you know, uh, I'm not here to downplay the issue either. I mean, you have legitimate concerns, uh, and, uh, we're here and we work with, we've worked with staff a lot in the past, we'll continue to work with them, uh, getting the information that you'd like to look at, making recommendations, showing you sample sign ordinances, showing, uh, what other communities have done. More than happy to do any of that.
We have another question from Ms. Chinoweth.
Yeah, I have a question, additional question, listening to the conversation. What are your thoughts about transfer development rights for billboards?
Transfer development rights? I'm not even sure where that comes from. It sounds like the way it's being used now is what we would consider a standard cap-and-replace. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, in a standard cap-and-replace, there's...
You could move it to some location.
The way, the way I, I think I heard cap-and-replace described earlier was, uh, you can only replace the existing billboard exactly where it is. That's not the industry's standard definition of cap-and-replace.
Okay.
There, under cap-and-replace are still an underlying ordinance, there's still underlying zoning that says you can build in these areas under these circumstances. Now, the number is capped at whatever it is now, 35. So if you build one somewhere else, you gotta take one down. And I would think in this situation, that sort of cap-and-replace is more preferable anyway, because I, I think it would be a good thing to spread them out a bit. And if you make them be continually replaced, uh, in the same area over and over again, it's not really addressing the issue, I don't think.
Mr. Lewis?
I've got one quickie. Would you be receptive to, would you be receptive to, um, deviating from standard? For example, if you have a standard that's 300 square feet, would you take a fourth of that?
A fourth of 300 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, just, just being, thinking about, you know, the various, uh, applications that you might have. Obviously, standards are based upon what industries can produce. Obviously, it's 12 by something or whatever, or 10 by or whatever. You can do the same thing with half the size, for example. Would you be receptive to that?
I would be receptive to discussing anything. I mean, I think if you throw everything on the table and then talk about it, it becomes apparent to usually both sides whether it makes sense or not. And, uh, the, the end answer of that is gonna be, well, it depends on everything else. You know, if, if, if you said a quarter, a quarter of the square feet, but what are all, you know, there's 50 different rules in a billboard sign ordinance. What are the other 49? If there's give and take somewhere in there, if it's all take, well, I doubt the industry would be amenable to that. But, uh, again, I'm just, you know, I'm me, and I'm speaking for Adams Outdoor. To a certain degree, I definitely don't really speak for the industry, but in general, you can't, you can't pick one out and say, would you do this? Well, I might, what is everything else? You know, or I might not, depending what everything else was. And, um, you usually have to look at it as a whole, and there's been compromises given before. We don't...
Mr. Smith?
One general sort of thing I can, I can, I can foresee may be, uh, spreading out the number of sign, you know, spreading it out, increasing the spacing requirement, in which case, uh, depending on the number of locations, you, you might actually, because of the spacing requirement, also mean, uh, a, a number of signs might have to come down. Might be a few, uh, you know, say, five or 10 or whatever, you know, fewer signs will fit in that space.
Right.
You know, that, that's not cap-and-replace, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh... It's cap, replace, and reduce, and transfer, all in, all in, all in one.
Well, in that, and generally, when all is said and done, that's, you'll end up with something like that. You won't end up with exactly a cap-and-replace because you're gonna say, okay, that's a nice thing, but we want to add this to it, or we want to subtract this out of it. So you'll end up with some sort of hybrid, um, anyway. But it, again, it, increased spacing is something we've dealt with before. It depends on what it is. Do you want to make it 1,000 square feet, or do you want to make it 15 miles? And what are the other 49 rules?
Yeah. Well, as I say, I, I'd like to see what you've done in other communities that have what I consider a, you know, progressive sign ordinances and how you've, how you've coexisted with those kinds of communities.
Sure. Absolutely get you with those things.
Just a few additional comments for staff. Um, on the issue of special use and non-stackable signs, uh, kind of listed some preferences before based on, actually did not know about the interstate, um, issue, which I think, it, it's been helpful in this discussion to understand, because I've never understood why things are clustered on University Avenue and not clustered on the, on the interstate. Now I understand. Stack, I think one thing I would like to see is, in addition, uh, density is a real issue, and especially, um, double billboards. I, I don't understand why we allow those in the first place. It's probably just part of the inertia of our ordinance.
We no longer allow those.
Okay, so...
Those are non-conforming.
So those are non-conforming. So, so one of the things, I guess, I'd be interested is not allowing for the replacement of non-conforming, um, billboards and potentially consider, um, removing double billboards and, um, replacing them with single billboards or something like that. So I don't know if we do it over time or we do it immediately. That's a conversation to have. But, um, that's particularly bad in terms of visual blight. The second is, has to do with the special use, and you, you had asked for guidance on that. I guess, having watched the special use process, on the one hand, it gives the, the city more, flexibility and power to deal with things on a case-by-case basis. There's a couple of negatives to the special use process that I think sometimes outweigh that. The first is staff time and community time generally, um, and, and, and time for the business. And the second is, is just the number of hurdles that it ends up taking for people to, to achieve things. I think that special use slows down the process, but if there's a way for us to actually establish criteria, good criteria upfront, where if you meet X, Y, and Z criteria, you're good to go, especially when it comes to limiting to locations, certain locations, I think that it may not be necessary for us to have, um, a special permit use process. Instead, we have design criteria, and we have certain locations that are allowed, and we have, um, a, a cap-and-replace or a cap-and-replace reduce, and a target to get billboards out of certain areas in our city. I think that would be more of a direction to go to than, um, having to see this come back to council over and over again.
Just to respond on the, um, special use permit, that is something we probably would recommend from a staff level, and that, um, we had thought that we had improved our design requirements for billboards. But when it came down to the administrative review, we weren't receiving all the information we really needed to understand the context, that each billboard can be very different in terms of context and impact on surrounding properties. And we really feel that they need this case-by-case review, um, with criteria. And, um, just having struggled through this with the building inspector and kind of the influx that we had, we felt that this might be a use that would lend itself to special use permit criteria. We could really see ahead of time what's it going to look like, what kind of landscaping or whatever would make sense in this context, in this location. And that type of review is ordinarily beyond what we're able to do at a staff level. Certainly, certainly possible, we can try again, but I know the goal before was, we were to improve the design criteria. We had it in the zoning ordinance, we thought we did a good job, but I believe it was less than successful. So we're trying to learn from maybe, um, the last text amendment and where it succeeded or failed. There was just, in response to, Mr. Roberts had talked about engaging the leaseholders. We have had, um, nothing too organized, but we've had many communications with leaseholders over the years, often through our neighborhood business groups, and especially for the North Cunningham Business Group, um, billboards have been a big issue. We've met individually with leaseholders, we've met oftentimes with property owners adjacent to leaseholders, and the difficulty, and this gets to the spacing requirement, is many times a neighbor, um, who may have objections to a billboard, had themselves passed up the lease opportunity. Because you can only have a billboard every 300 feet, um, neighbors are being solicited and competing against each other for either the opportunity to, to get that lease income or, um, the opportunity to perhaps impact their neighbors detrimentally, depending on how it turns out. It's not a happy situation for neighboring property owners. So we've done some of those discussions in these business groups and individually, and it's, it's pretty, it can be very sensitive for the leaseholders.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
On no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Darn it.